Good afternoon, I would like to call the October 8th, 2013 City Council Meeting to Order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hachkas.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
And then item number one.
Proclamation declaring October 11th, 2013 as International Day of the Girl.
Good afternoon. On December 19, 2011, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution to declare October 11th as International Day of the Girl, to recognize girls' rights and the unique challenges girls face around the world. And the International Day of the Girl is dedicated to educating and helping girls overcome obstacles by empowering them to be strong, smart, and bold, while urging them to realize their potential and follow their dreams. In an attempt to advocate for gender equality in the world, Girls Inc. of Greater Santa Barbara and other local and state agencies have brought the celebration of International Day of the Girl to Santa Barbara. And in 2012, Girls Inc. of Greater Santa Barbara served 1,101 girls in ages ranging from five to 18, and distributed over $400,000 in scholarship support. So on behalf of the City of Santa Barbara, I'm proud to join Girls Inc. of Greater Santa Barbara. In celebration of International Day of the Girl, I wish to thank all of our city's girls and women for their contributions to our city. So by the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2013, as International Day of the Girl. So thank you for your work that you do each and every day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, if you'd like to say anything.
On behalf of Girls Incorporated of Greater Santa Barbara, especially our girls, I'd like to thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for this special and important proclamation of Day of the Girl, a response to an urgent problem facing our world today, the neglect and devaluation of girls around the world. On October 11th, groups across the world, including Girls Inc. of Greater Santa Barbara, act to highlight, discuss, celebrate, and ultimately advance girls' lives and opportunities across the globe. October 11th is not just a day, it's a movement. It's a worldwide revolution. It is a reflection of what we've done and what we need to do to fully achieve gender equality everywhere, including our own community. In order to tackle the issues that directly impact girls' lives, we have to identify issues that serve as barriers for girls to fully participate in the world and be committed to working towards solutions to those barriers, of which just a few include negative media images, sports and education equity guaranteed, girl school dropout crisis, illiteracy, relationship abuse, including dating and domestic violence, and sex trafficking in America. For over 58 years in our community, Girls Inc. has responded to the changing needs, barriers, and issues of girls through our research-based after-school and summer educational programs and activities, and through public education and advocacy efforts, such as awareness and support of Day of the Girl, that empower girls to understand, value, and assert their rights. So lastly, before thanking you again, I'd like to just share three things with you. One is actually a request, and that is, on the Day of the Girl, which is October 11th, Friday, we'd ask that you wear red or red and white in support of Girls Inc. and our efforts to empower all girls. And, number two, to let you know of a film viewing that will happen on Thursday evening at the Faulkner Gallery. The film title is Girl Rising. And three, to let you know of a community forum that will happen on October 16th at the Dalry Davis Center, if I have that right, on De La Vina. So thank you again, genuinely and from our heart, on behalf of all of us at Girls Incorporated, for your proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, I'm going to start with David Daniel Diaz, and then Dr. Chappelle, you're up, but I want to ask you a question before you get started. But Mr. Diaz, if you could go right ahead.
Good morning, Council in Santa Barbara. First, a disabled issue down at Cabrillo Boulevard. There's a vendor who's been there for 10 years. He has a motor home where he carries his goods, and he also lives, but he's getting tickets now for parking in the disabled parking section there on the beach because it's a motor home. Violation of the ADA. You cannot discriminate on what type of vehicles disabled Americans can or cannot drive. Number two, I was asked to witness a situation on 400 Block of Solidad this weekend. A meter maid came, tow truck came, they're going to get rid of this truck. The guy came and the meter maid talked with the tow truck driver for approximately half hour to 45 minutes. He finally got the truck started, moved it to the next block, walked away. The neighbors were concerned and upset because during the week he uses other trucks to come and transfer. It was a refuse transfer station from one truck to another, and it was leaving the neighborhood stinking pretty bad. And I was totally shocked that it took that long for the guy to get the truck going. The tow truck literally had to wait there with the meter maid while she was trying to encourage the guy to hurry up and get his car running, his truck running, rather. So, a little weird thing, you know? I think we should be a little more explicit. If we're going to tow, we should tow. We shouldn't accommodate the needs for over a half hour. And lastly, I won the lottery today. I came in to use the restroom in the men's stall. They have two doors that are off the men's sitting stalls and one that's locked. Well, I don't know how it is in the women's, but in the men's, they also have the sanitary paper you can sit on, you can put on the seat. And the two that do not have the doors open do not accommodate that needs. The sanitary aspect and the privacy aspect is quite interesting. I don't know if the women have it the same way, but I was just totally surprised, blown away, that behind that locked door, there's sanitary sheets you can put on your seat. But anyhow, have a good day.
I have to say, I've never been in there, so... Okay. Mr. Chappelle, if you could please come up, and I won't start the time just yet. I noticed you have quite a few people who are waiving their time for you. That would lead up to 24 minutes, and usually that is not as much, I mean, that's pretty extensive. So how much time do you think you need?
10 minutes is fine.
10 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. And I see a number of people that can certainly get 10 minutes that are here, so I don't have to go through all the lists. But I appreciate your accommodation there.
Thank you very much.
So go right ahead, you have up to 10 minutes.
Mayor Schneider and the City Council. My name is James Chappelle. I live in Ojai, California. For 42 years, I've been a traditional naturopath specializing in detoxifying individuals experiencing chemical or drug-induced cognitive decline or other adverse health issues. I've also spent this time studying and researching the law. I'm a retired chiropractic physician, clinical nutritionist, and medical herbalist. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology emphasizing stress-related degenerative health conditions, and I'm a former social worker for the towns of Kennebunk and Kennebunkport, Maine, having spent five years there as their youth services coordinator. I work directly under the authority of the respective town select persons, their police departments, and the York County Unified School District. My responsibilities included consulting parents and their children in conflict resolution, crisis intervention, family and adversarial mediation, substance abuse counseling, and runaway location. I'm a certified forensic disability specialist and advocate under the Americans with Disabilities Act, amended Act of 2008, and I'm a commissioner with the Citizens Commission on Human Rights, a nonprofit organization founded in 1969 to expose the over-medication of American children and adults under the auspices of psychiatric care. I'm not here as an adversary. I'm merely reporting on the state of your legal and healthcare systems as they affect your elderly. I do not practice the law or allopathic medicine. I've heard from reliable sources, some attorneys within your community are instructing their clients to stay away from me using slanderous and untruthful statements. Although I have an independent investigator looking into this, I don't blame these attorneys for doing so, especially those that are threatened by my investigation and representation, and that have a financial vested interest in keeping their clients within their system and control. However, I am here as an advocate for your citizens, protected under the ADA, established under the United States Department of Justice Civil Rights Division. No attorney, no judge, or public official need worry about me, as long as they are not violating the Constitution, their oath of office, or the law. If they do, I have contacts within the Department of Justice that will investigate all those suspected of violating the ADA or that have gone beyond the color of law. Relative to elder abuse, I'm not only duty-bound to report it, but pursuant to California's newly enacted AB 40, Elder Abuse and Dependent Adult Civil Protection Act, we're all duty-bound to protect the elderly and report abuses when discovered. After months of investigation, I'm here today to report how the City of Santa Barbara, through their court, legal, and healthcare systems, is actually abusing the elderly. This is not unique to this city. This system is placed, is in place in every city in the United States. In all the years I've been a health and legal researcher, I've never encountered anything more effective, efficient, diabolical, and insidious. This system is either known, or should be known, or is authorized, allowed, or sanctioned from the President of the United States, Congress, governors, Attorney Generals, even the City Council and Board of Supervisors, all the way down to the lawyers that are benefiting from the system. From Maine to California, I've discovered elder abuse by corruption, collusion, and deceit for profit. In closed chambers, I can be more specific. In order for one of your elders to enter this system, they must be found without capacity or have an applicable disability. All it usually takes is a diagnosis from one reporting doctor. The most common disability given for our elderly is dementia. Once a person is labeled with dementia or a similar brain disorder, depending on circumstances, social services will petition the court for a court-ordered conservator of the state, whereby they control the conservator's money or assets, and/or a conservator of the person taking custody and control of the individual's freedom and medical choice. If a trust is involved with the elder as a trustee, the court will order a substitution trustee. Each fiduciary will be assigned counsel, including the conservator. The cost for assisted living and all other principal assignees can easily be over $10,000 to $15,000 per month. This system continues until the conservator is declared with capacity, there is no more money to pay for it, or they die. Unfortunately, as found on Alzheimer's.org, the average life expectancy of a dementia patient committed to a caretaking facility is approximately six months. According to the 2010 United States Census Bureau, there are over 40 million people in the United States 65 years or older. As reported by the World Health Organization, 10% of those 65 years or older, or approximately 4 million, living in the United States have been diagnosed with dementia. As reported by the Mayo Clinic, dementia is a state of confusion, memory loss, hallucinations, motor impairment, and other symptoms. They also state dementia can be caused by, I quote, "a reaction to a single medication or because of an interaction of several medications." As of 2010, the California Department of Aging stated there are over 54,000 people 65 years or older living in Santa Barbara. Statistically, Santa Barbara may have over 5,400 people living and dying with dementia. In my research, I found an increasing number of Santa Barbara elderly diagnosed with dementia on three or four medications. One commonly prescribed is the antipsychotropic drug called Seracil. According to the FDA, this drug is absolutely forbidden to be used in elderly with suspected dementia. As described on Drugs.com, the side effects are confusion, memory loss, hallucination, motor impairment, and more. The exact symptoms of dementia, of all the drugs I've researched commonly given to the elderly, 90% of them mimic the symptoms of dementia. One of your elder citizens was prescribed 22 medications for dementia and other symptoms by two of your doctors here in Santa Barbara. Seracil was one of them. I was contacted by this man's fiancee to help stop this overdosing as it was causing dangerous side effects. This started with a simple visit to the hospital for a slip and fall. After hitting his head and being somewhat confused at the time, it led to a diagnosis of dementia, and this could happen to anyone. Once a conservator was assigned, the man's assets were seized and exhausted by the system. Over $1.5 million vanished in less than four years. I attempted to file a complaint with the California Attorney General's Office. I was told to contact the Santa Barbara District Attorney. When I did, I was told to file a complaint with the Santa Barbara Police Department. A formal complaint was filed with before and after pictures showing the side effects of 22 different toxic drugs. Your police did nothing about the complaint. My client died. This is not an isolated case. I have more.
You have two minutes left.
But not today.
You have two more minutes left.
Pardon me?
I said you have two more minutes left.
When I tried to help your elderly in Superior Court, I have been unlawfully told to sit down and be quiet, that only attorney can be an advocate in the courtroom. Of course, this is a violation of the ADA, the United States and California constitutions, and numerous statutes, 42 U.S.C. Sections 12, 101, 12, 102, and 12, 203. I've already filed a complaint with the California Committee on Judicial Performance and with the Justice Department. I don't blame these judges for their ignorance. I realize they have a tremendous workload. However, ignorance of the law is no excuse. Your elderly suffer as a consequence. I guess I'm running out of time, so I can't get into my solutions, but we do have solutions. I'm going to give you a copy of what I've written here. My, all I want to emphasize is this. An ADA advocate can actually speak for someone that cannot speak, and they can listen for someone that can't hear. It's all in the ADA law. And yet, this court system, and I'm thinking of this one judge in particular, they don't have a clue. They think, well, an ADA advocate is there for hearing aids and wheelchairs. Not anymore, folks. What we have is an opportunity for this town to maybe be the first town in the United States to really embrace what's happening, because all of us are getting older, and we may be in that condition. Through education and taking effective action, I believe this community may be the first to address this epidemic. I hope my words do not stop here, and I thank you for your time.
You can give that to the clerk right here. Thank you very much, Dr.
Yep.
Continue now with... Okay, if you can, thank you. Flora West, and then Jay Goolsbee. If it's easier, there's another mic down there. Sure, you can turn that one on, if that's easier. And just... There you go. You have two minutes.
My name is Flora West, and my topic is elder abuse, which I have experienced. My granddaughter evidently contacted a group of people who call themselves Senior Planning Services. And then my granddaughter took me up to her home and passed over to visit her family. And while I was up there, the locks on my residence in Santa Barbara were changed, and a renter was moved in with a year's lease. So when I returned back to Santa Barbara, I had no place to live. While I was in Passover, my bank account was closed, and another one was open at another bank where only a third of my social security was deposited each month. They have now also stole my two rental houses in Oxnard to get money for their big salaries, leaving me with little money for my retirement years, as I was depending upon the rental money. They also receive all of my mail, and I am treated like a person who is mentally handicapped, and I feel I have lost all my civil rights. We older people are being financially abused by these people and their attorneys. Judge Stern would not give me my freedom back. They keep spending your money and saying you're doing, going downhill. I need help to get out of the court system, and I want my dignity and freedom back. Thank you.
Jay Goolsbee. Will be followed by Crisito Herrera Cruz, and then Steve Reynolds will be the final speaker.
Usually, I have something to say, but all I can say is that I took care of my mother who had Alzheimer's, and I'm actually experiencing some of the same characteristics myself now, and so I know what's going on here. But I just want to learn more about what's going on. Thank you.
Crisito Herrera Cruz.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members, and people present in the chambers. I have good news to say, but even though the young lady comes before us, that's a political tearjerker. You can't not be deaf and not listen to what she has said. If that didn't get a tear in your eye, and had that compassion to be public servants, and listen to our adults, listen to our youth, then that's why we're here, for service. My name is Crisito Herrera Cruz. I'm number six in the Mayoral ballot election. I have good news. My first political and ever political endorsement from a public official has come about this Sunday while eating some chorizo menudo at Los Amigos Cafe at La Casa La Raza. First District Supervisor, Salud Carvajal, has publicly endorsed my campaign. Is that political steam or what?
Okay, I've been very ni... Hold on. I'm going to make you stop the clock. If we could stop with the clapping, we want to make sure we can hear what people have to say. Thank you. Go right ahead, Crisito.
Y como les dije al Consilio y al Alcalde, la señora Schneider, que si la señorita que apenas habló, no le dio esa lágrima política que sintieron el corazón de los servicios que se necesita para nuestros ancianos, para nuestros jóvenes. Esa es por la razón por qué el Consilio está, para el servicio para el pueblo, al servicio a los comunitarios, a las personas de la comunidad. Yo soy el número seis en el folleto de elecciones. Por favor, voten por mí. Hoy, el domingo, en La Casa La Raza, ahí con Los Amigos Cafe, el primero distrito supervisor, Salud Carvajal, me dio mi declaración política y apoyo. Muchas gracias señor Salud Carvajal, por esa political endorsement, chicanismo, happening in front of you right now. So with that, I greatly appreciate it, and hopefully, this election can be done successfully. And I just need 10 seconds.
Go ahead. You've got 10 seconds.
I do not condone the censorship from the Business Council, Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce, Greater Restaurant and Lodging of Santa Barbara, for not inviting me to the public forums, ma'am.
Thank you.
We should have a free and American discourse.
That's more than 10 seconds. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Reynolds.
Vote for Crisito.
Steve Reynolds will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon. A couple days ago, I witnessed an incident where an elderly man was being kicked by a young man. A homeless elderly man was being kicked as he was sleeping. As the young man was kicking this homeless person, he says, "The City of Santa Barbara doesn't want you here." And I found that pretty ironic, because that's the same thing the police department have been saying when they write me tickets for illegal lodging. I did some research. I've been thinking a lot about this, and I realized that for the past 30 years, since Reagan left the governor's office, the City of Santa Barbara's had the same policy regarding sleeping in public. And I just wanted to let you know that nothing has changed in those past 30 years, except for the zeros in the campaign donations of our candidates. And I'd like people to give that some serious consideration. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We have now the consent calendar. You could read the items you need to read.
Item three, local coastal program amendment for 415 Allen Road, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a local coastal program amendment for the property at 415 Allen Road, Parcel B. Item four, recommendation by the Fire and Police Commission to modify the city's tow service rules and regulations, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving changes made to the tow rules and regulations by the Fire and Police Commission pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 5.30. Item five, introduction of ordinance for consent to sublease amendment between Signature Flight Support Corporation and Fidelity National Financial, Incorporated, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a consent to amendment of sublease number 200855 between Signature Flight Support Corporation, a Delaware corporation, and Fidelity National Financial, Incorporated, a Delaware corporation, dated as of October 15, 2013, amending the term of the sublease to make it co-terminus with that of the master lease, July 31, 2016. And item six, adoption of ordinance for gas franchise, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara granting Southern California Gas Company a franchise to install, use, maintain, repair, and replace pipes and appurtenances for the purpose of transmitting and distributing natural gas for any and all purposes within the City of Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the readings. Anyone need to take an item off? I have a question on number four. Is any other items... No. I have a question on number four. It's the tow, it's already, it was already read, about the city tow service rules. If I could, if you can come out on Captain.
Thank you. I was looking at the agreement here, and first off, appreciate the section in here about if there was an error made in PD towing a car, and then there are fees associated with that. Those fees could be waived, and that's in the, in the, in the number 13 mistaken tow, which I understand is rare, but does happen. I've had some emails related to that in my tenure here. My question is, how are fees determined when it's a PD called-in tow, as opposed to another reason for an accident or something? Do we, does the city set the fees? Is it part of the fee schedule? Is it totally up to the tow company? How does that work?
Madam Mayor and Council, it's, it's set by the fee schedule, the tows. Typically, when we respond to a tow, there are various different types of tow we respond to. From a traffic accident, those typically will be owner-requested tows. If they don't have a request, we'll call the on-call. Those will go to the tow company, and then the owners will settle those. The tows that we impound for evidence, we typically will foot the bill for that. So if there's a reason that we need the vehicle, we're going to pay the bill, and that's, that's based on the fee schedule that we have with the tow companies.
Okay, so during our budget, and I'm sorry I didn't ask you this question ahead of time. You're being put on the spot here, so I appreciate that. So the fee schedule that we do every year with the budget includes specific fees that tow companies can charge an individual or us, depending on the scenario. Is that what you're saying, when you're saying the fee schedule?
Yeah, there's a preset fee schedule that the tow companies charge us, yes.
But is that fee schedule something that they've determined what is a reasonable fee, or is that something that we determine what the reasonable fee is, and then that we just say, this is what you can get paid under certain circumstances?
I believe it's, it's, it's set by the Fire and Police Commission.
It's set by, okay, okay. I bring this up because sometimes there are situations that occur that don't have to do with an accident or evidence, but maybe, and maybe some of the new laws that were just signed, new bills that were signed into law by the governor, may change this, where you have someone who didn't have a driver's license, and there's a tow, and it's an old car, and days go by, and then the fees become more expensive than the value of the car, and, you know, it becomes this issue that you hear once in a while. And that's maybe a moot point after January 1st with the new laws. I guess what I would like to ask offline is if we could, you know, analyze that a little bit, because I do get, once in a while, those kind of inquiries. And if necessary, if, if, if those laws don't address those issues, then perhaps next year during our budget cycle, we may want the Fire and Police Commission to look in a little more detail at the fee structure where appropriate.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any, anything, I don't need to vote on this separately. Ms. Mario?
Oh, I was just going to move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 12.
Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan Amendment and Zone Change Initiation.
Okay, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm an investor in a dementia care facility, and so, with the possibility of conflict of interest, so I will be stepping out of the room on this item.
Okay, we'll see you later. As we're waiting for staff to get here, just a question, Mr. Wiley, moving forward. This is a zone change, this is a five-vote affirmative vote necessary, is that required, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. The request before you today is to initiate an amendment to the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan to allow for an Alzheimer senior care facility at 251 South Hope Avenue. The specific plan currently restricts development of that property to auto dealerships and related facilities. This is an image of the subject property. It's an irregularly shaped 1.76-acre parcel that zoned PD for planned development, E3, which is a single-family residential. It's in the SD2, which is the Outer State Street overlay area, and it's also zoned SP4, which is for the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan.
Can you orient me a little bit there? I can't see— I see what you got, but I'm not sure where—
Sure. It's this area bounded by the blue, so it's east of Lacumbra Plaza.
Oh, okay.
And it has frontage along Hope Avenue. This is the YMCA.
Oh, is that the one that's frequently used for Christmas tree sales?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and this is Big Wave Dave's tent, right here. So it's either setting up or taking down Christmas trees or pumpkins. And Graham Chevrolet is just to the south. The property's been vacant since the specific plan was approved. And here is a map of the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan. So the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan is divided into five separate areas. The plan limited uses on areas A1 and A2 to auto dealerships and related uses. Area B2 was initially restricted to auto dealership and related uses. There was a subsequent amendment to the specific plan that allowed for residential there. Area B1 was restricted to affordable housing, and Area C was restricted to residential. The specific plan was adopted in 1984. The purpose of the specific plan was to provide for a precise level of planning and orderly development for that particular property. The three main goals were to improve circulation in the Outer State Street area, provide housing, including affordable housing, and to provide for auto dealerships. At the time, the city knew that existing downtown auto dealerships were about to be displaced by the Crosstown Freeway Project. This is aerial photograph from the time of adoption of the specific plan. Overlaid are the current street system, and the specific plan is outlined in blue here. The entire Rancho Arroyo area was orchards at that time. You can see Hitchcock was developed with auto dealerships. Plaza del Oro was already developed. This was a miniature golf course, golf and fun, I think, and Bob's Big Boy was down at the corner of Hitchcock and Caire Real. The specific plan included dedication for major circulation improvements, including the extension of Hope Avenue, the extension of Hitchcock Way, extension realignment of Caire Real, and dedication for the hook ramps at Hope Avenue and 101. And this is a more recent photo of that area. The specific plan was completely built out in the '80s and '90s, with the exception of the subject property. So Area A1 to auto dealerships were developed. Area B2, there's 40 condos. Area B1, 112 affordable senior apartments. And Area C, 96 condo units. So the city's zoning ordinance restricts auto dealerships for new auto sales in the PD zone only. PD is concentrated in one area of the city. It includes the entirety of the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan and five additional parcels. Those five parcels are here on either side of Hitchcock Way. So it's this block that's outside of the Rancho Arroyo area. Because this property is still vacant after 29 years and is adjacent to multifamily residential and very physically constrained site, staff is supporting allowing for limited additional uses, including the proposed residential care facility. The zoning ordinance currently allows residential care facilities with conditional use permits in residential and commercial zones. They require state licensing, and specific standards and findings are required for their approval. Staff's recommending that council initiate the specific plan amendment to allow senior residential care facility with the CUP to use the existing regulations and process that we have.
We have a question, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you go back to the previous slide, please? So when you talked about the shape and size of the lot, is that—are you inferring that that's not suitable for the kind of development that you're—that it's zoned for? Is that kind of where we're going here?
Right. So there's a long street frontage along Hope Avenue, so there's a front setback required by the SD2. The western leg of the parcel is a Royal Borough Creek, so there's a setback off of Royal Borough Creek, too. And there's also an earthquake fault on the tip of the parcel, so the developable area is restricted.
Well, yeah, because I would just—I'm sure there's a certain footprint required for a viable business of that type. So I probably think there's a suitability factor involved there, then. All right.
The general plan designation of the property is commercial, medium-high-density residential with a density of 15 to 27 units an acre. The property is currently zoned for a single-family residential, in addition to the PD, SP4, and the SD2. An R3 zone would be consistent with the general plan designation. It also has a 45-foot height maximum, where the E3 has a 30-foot height maximum, and that would affect the development proposal by the applicant. Staff's recommending that council initiate a zone change for the residential zoning of the property from E3 to R3. In addition, we're also recommending that council initiate an amendment to include community benefit housing and is an allowed use in the case that the proposal is abandoned or it's constructed and then its use ceases. The housing element identifies various community housing needs in the city, and if initiated, the planning commission would address details of allowable types of housing through the regular development process. The original 1964 general plan map showed a park icon along the creek in the vicinity of this parcel. The park symbol was removed with Rancho Arroyo approval, and recreation requirements were incorporated into the specific plan. The specific plan requires park and recreation review of development proposals in Rancho Arroyo, and also dedication and construction of a public trail along Royal Borough Creek on this particular parcel. So staff's recommending that council initiate an amendment to include recreation open space as recognized and allowed use on the property. In summary, staff's recommending council initiate an amendment to the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan to allow the following additional uses on A2, and the auto use would remain on A2 as well. So state licensed senior residential care facility with conditional use permit, community benefit housing, and recreation open space. And also initiate a zone change, a residential zone change to the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan, Area A2, from E3 to R3. If council initiates, the next steps would be application submittal, completeness and environmental review by staff, planning commission review and decision on the conditional use permit and any modifications, and a recommendation to council on the specific plan and any zone change. There would be concurrent ABR design review, and then city council would consider the specific plan amendment and zone change. And that concludes my comments, and the applicant is here to make a presentation.
Thank you. Any questions first, and then we do have some public comment. Ms. Mario?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Wiley.
I should have been clear in response to your question that the five-vote requirement doesn't apply today. That's ultimately that last step where the council would introduce an ordinance. The adoption of the ordinance would require five—a supermajority.
Right, but if there's only four at this point in time, that then leads to the question, will there be five? Well, I guess you could test it out and see what happens. Right, okay. So today, to move forward, you need a minimum of four, but to complete this action, you need five eventually.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Mario? Yes?
Madam Mayor, I stand corrected. The applicant does not have a presentation prepared, but they're available for questions.
Okay. Ms. Mario.
Thank you. You say your name, Gallett or Guley?
Gullett, thank you.
Gullett. Mr. Gullett, can you clarify this issue of parkland? When I read the staff report, it mentioned a park icon, but it didn't seem to—the report didn't seem to say what you said today. Was there some designation as parkland there? And is it in our parks register?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, this is an image from the 1964 general plan. It shows this area as a planned center, and the tree demarks a park. I don't know if it was a neighborhood park or a regional park, but there was extensive review of the Rancho Arroyo Specific Plan. It included hearings with Parks and Recreation Commission. And in the conditions of the specific plan, there's requirements for each development to provide recreation and open space for each of the developments. And that also includes the trail dedication on this particular parcel. So this icon, potential future park, isn't reflected in our current general plan.
So, and I guess maybe this is a question for Mr. Wiley. So we're sure that this land where the development is proposed was never designated as parkland? I just—I'm feeling a little—I just need assurance.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, well, we know that this has always been private property, and it is today private property.
Okay.
Really, even when you prepared a document like this back then, it was a planning tool for, in the future, the city might want this to be some form of maybe public park or open space, private property, open space, available for use by the public. And essentially, that's, as I understand, the staff recommendation. This remains—this creek would remain private property, but there might be, when the development comes forward, a requirement for a dedication of a trail along the creek that would be accessible to the public, much like down in, say, Las Pecitas Valley, off of Las Pecitas, there are, I believe, county trails over private property accessible to the public.
Do we know, Mr. Cato or Mr. Gullett, if people who live nearby use it as a trail? I don't hang out there very much, so I don't know.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, there is—there was a trail dedicated behind the auto dealerships, and there is a beaten path behind the auto dealerships. It was landscaped to accommodate that trail. There is no trail that was—it doesn't appear that the area of the trail is being used currently. There is a beaten path across the property to get to the trail, to the rear of the auto One thing I haven't mentioned is the Upper State Street study also includes trails on either side of Royal Borough Creek, including this property. And that trail alignment matches the dedication that would be included with this proposal. So other than that, I don't see any evidence of public recreation on that property.
But it would be—the development would be—setback would be required, correct, from the top of the bank, et cetera?
Correct. A setback would be required. It's staff's preference that the trail be at least 25 feet from the top of bank of Royal Borough Creek, and we've had that discussion with the applicant. And so the trail alignment that was discussed in the original plan may be slightly different with a development proposal that comes forward to allow for some creek restoration.
And then I have a question about whether this kind of facility and these beds are needed in the community. Is someone from the project gonna talk about that, or is that for a later down the road?
That can happen right now, if you want. They were available for questions, so.
May I ask the project proponents if they can tell us that there's a need for this kind of facility? Thank you.
You could state your name for the record. Thank you.
Don Piteri with CNA Senior Living and Pacific Summit Development. The studies we have undertaken on this show a need of several thousand memory care units for Santa Barbara, and that's only gonna be increasing as the overall national need for dementia care is due to be 50% more than it is today within the next 15 years.
That's it for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gullett, I'd like to elaborate further on Councilmember Rouse's question. So what is the—given that there's a creek setback and there's a front setback from Hope Avenue, what is the—what are the dimensions of the buildable footprint here?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Francisco, we don't have it as a slide, but as part of one of the attachments to your council staff report, it was the letter from the applicant, and that had a series of attachments. One of them was—one of them's a proposed site plan, probably about halfway back in your packet, just before attachment two.
A2, mhm.
Yes, site plan A2. And I think Mr. Gullett's gonna be putting that up on the board. This shows the property boundaries plus all of the—I mean, they've cited a building that seems to work for them, to be the size that they want, and that also meets all the setbacks and meets—seems to meet—the—so far, initially, initial review seems to meet the constraints on the site. So it's big enough for what they propose. I think Councilmember Rouse asked the question, "Would it be any good for a car dealership", right? And what we've been told by the applicants is that it's too constrained for a standalone—that's too constrained for a standalone dealership, and what we've also been told is that Graham Chevrolet, the only neighbor, wasn't interested, or the price was too high, or, you know, they couldn't come to an agreement on using that to expand Graham Chevrolet. So they came to us and said, "It's not really viable as an auto dealership, and why can't we use it for another high priority community benefit use?" And we basically looked at the site and the constraints, and we agreed with them and said, "Yeah, it seems like it'd be a pretty good way to use that land."
I see the site plan. I don't have the eyesight to read the microscopic numbers on it, but I guess that is the question. We also have a letter from Mr. Graham. And if I understood you correctly, this particular zone is the only place in the city where auto dealerships can be located?
Councilmember Francisco, basically, yes. I mean, new car dealerships. Used car dealerships can be in the C2 zone, a bunch of different places in the city. And so there's a—the other thing that we've been told by the applicants and their agents is that the whole paradigm for car dealerships is changing, right? We're all used to a giant lot with a bazillion cars on it, you know, with the big balloons and everything. And what we're told is that that's changing. Car dealerships—or the car dealers and the manufacturers, they don't want to have a whole bunch of inventory. It's changing to a way—it's more like order-as-you-go. Tesla is a prime example of what's going on with this. And I'm not sure if you know about— And I'm not sure if you know about this, but Tesla wants to open a little showroom in Santa Barbara, and we've been talking to them about it. Their model is completely different. They have a showroom that they want to put on State Street, that's just going to be a building with a car in it, and then maybe a model of what the insides look like, and then out back, one car that they can, you can test drive. So you come in, you look around, you take a test drive, you order a car, and then, you know, a month or however many days later, they call you up and say, your car is ready, you know, come get it. And then you pick it up at their service facility, which is in a different location. So this idea of car dealerships, you know, needing a lot of space, and it's just sort of changing.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I think this is the big policy question in front of you today. The city, 30-plus years ago, decided that this was going to be the area where we wanted to concentrate our new car dealerships. And I think it's worked very well and served the city very well. And quite frankly, new car dealerships are a very good source of revenue for the city. And so as you look at kind of the balancing needs of what the city needs, revenue is one of them. So we struggled with this property and also the remnants of the other dealership over on Hitchcock about how to proceed. And on this property, with its constraints, with the creek setback and the frontage setback and the earthquake fault, and the fact that it hasn't been developed in 25-plus years, we kind of felt that we've tested the market as to whether this was ever going to live as an auto dealership of some sort. And so that's when they approached us with another high community priority use. We were willing to bring this forward to council for consideration. And today, what we're asking is, are you interested in initiating this before they spend good, hard-earned money going through the development process with an application? Are you interested in proceeding that or not? And I'll be honest, I've really struggled myself professionally about what to recommend to council on this item because we don't have other areas for new dealerships in town. And there's going to come a day when people are going to knock on our door and say, we want to do a new dealership, and we have to say, sorry, we don't have it anymore.
Are the other lots completely filled? Isn't there an empty lot still, or is that being filled?
No, there's one empty lot left over there on Hitchcock, which is larger than the site, has historically been used as a new dealership. And so I think we, there's also interest, though, from housing, people to look at housing on that site as well. And I've shared my similar concerns with them about this balance of competing needs from a city's interest. And I think why, on this triangle lot, it is undersized, it is small, it does have a number of constraints, and it has sit empty without any dealership use for such a long period of time. I think that's why we brought this one forward to you and are recommending that you go and initiate it. But it's a difficult question, I think.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam.
I'm sorry, were you done, Mr. Francisco? Go ahead.
Mr. Casey, you bring up a point I was thinking about the entire presentation, is clearly, this case looks appropriate, it doesn't not look appropriate for a new car dealership. But I wanted to be consistent because we had that hearing recently about the other subject property, and the answer was different. We did, and staff was very clear that the highest and best use, as far as the city was concerned, was the current zoning, which is for automobile dealerships. So if you could flesh out a little bit the differences between these two cases for me, just, I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, but it, I mean, there's certain things that seem obvious to me, but maybe not obvious to the general public, so.
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Rouse, that one, I mean, that question's, to me, that's very easy. This one is like a triangle shape, it's got the earthquake fault, it's got the creek setback, it's got the trail easement, it's small, versus the other one that is, it's much larger. It's probably, it's probably got twice as much usable area because it's a rectangle shape. It has been, it's the northern half of what used to be Mel Clayton Ford, and the southern half now being Lexus. So it's perfect. I mean, it was one, it has been one. We envision it that it could be one again. We've really held the line, talking to the applicants and agents about that property because we just see it as a completely different animal because of the size and the lack of constraints on that one versus the four or five different constraints of this one.
Okay, thanks, yeah, just because I remember going through these arguments before, and the other one has had been fallow, maybe because of lack of interest, I'm not sure why. This one clearly has physical constraints that I can't imagine, you know, putting anything viable on their car dealership, so.
That's how we feel about it as well. That's why we feel this one's different, and that's the reason that we were able to support the request.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you for that answer.
Mr. Hotchkiss, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The kind of dealership you described that could be on State Street, is that, would we need special permission to do that?
We looked at it very carefully as staff and with the city attorney's office, and we determined that it didn't, that didn't need, that type of operation is more like just a regular retail thing. It's not, you know, the car dealership that needs to be in a specific place.
Is it appropriate at this time to get into what traffic implications are, et cetera, with this, or are we too early on for that?
Traffic implications of the proposed?
Yes.
Alzheimer's?
Yeah.
I think we could. They're usually really low traffic and parking generators because the residents don't own cars, so it's really visitors and staff. And one model that I'm familiar with, I can't remember the name of it, but it's on Alamar and just a couple of blocks above State Street. And, you know, it's got a small parking lot that, basically, it's almost never has any cars in it. It's, we did.
That doesn't sound like a detailed analysis.
No, it isn't, it isn't, because we're not at that stage yet.
All right.
But our experience with these things, these types of operations, we just approved one at 1820 Del Avina Street, and it was also a low-traffic and parking generator.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, you are at the pre-early phase of an application. We don't have an application, we haven't begun any analysis. And this check-in is just to see, are you willing to let them enter the process and have all that detailed information?
So, good response. If we were willing to let them go forward, and then for some reason it failed, would it revert to this, or would that open the door for somebody else to come in and do the same thing?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, it sort of depends on where, when that happened. If they, if council initiates, they go forward with the process, and they never conclude the process, and it never comes back to council for the adoption of the specific plan amendment, then it just stays as it is. And the only thing that would be allowed are auto dealerships. But if they went through the process, got an approval from planning commission, came back to council, council approved the specific plan amendment and the rezone, and then later the people decided not to go forward, then the specific plan amendment would be in place, there would be an entitlement, they could sell that entitlement, and somebody else could.
Their door would be open, is it?
Yeah, or they could sell the whole project, and somebody else would come in with another project with either community benefit housing, or senior care, or recreation open space.
But that step is considerably down the line.
Way down the line, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to public comment right now. We'll start with Matt Graham and Jessica Graham, who wanted to come up together, and then Jean Parks. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm here today to voice my opposition to the specific amendment to allow the development of Alzheimer's senior care facility in this proposal. I'm an employee at a car dealership, actually Graham Chevrolet, right next door. I want to give you just a little brief history of the residential neighborhood that was developed across the street from us. Many years ago, the development across the street was to be built. We thought it would be great to have a mixed-use neighborhood, and we were for it. But once the residents started moving in, the problems began. From day one, we were getting complaints of industrial noise, nightlights, security lights. I know this because I've taken many calls over the years from the residents that are catty-corner from our dealership. And I've done, or our dealership has made many modifications to try to accommodate those neighbors, but because of the nature of a car dealership, we can't fix them all. One of the things that I noticed was the letter that was sent to City Council was that it stated that noise from operating, noises from operation of the adjacent auto dealership is not anticipated to be an issue, and that the noise is directed away from the Alzheimer's facility. Well, you can't tell here, but behind both auto dealerships, there's about a 35 or 40-foot dirt embankment that goes up to the mall. And what that does, and that's what's been a problem for us for years, is it's a soundboard, and all the noises that come from our facility are pushed from that wall into that residential area, which causes problems continuously. What kind of noises am I talking about? Well, one of the things that's unique to Santa Barbara is we have a lot of visitors here. A lot of visitors go to the beach, and in the day, they lose their keys, their only set of keys to their car. So they'll make a phone call to a tow truck, and then depending on the time of the day, often at night, we have a lot of tow truck deliveries that are delivered to our dealership. Well, if you don't have the keys to your car, and it's on a tow truck, as soon as they drop the car, what happens to your car? The alarm goes off. The biggest complaint we get from our neighbors, and we've yet to figure out a cure for it, is car alarms going off all night long. Another problem we have are tractor trailers delivering new vehicles to all of these dealerships here, and they park all in this area. One of the things they do is that they deliver a lot of cars at night to reduce noise, and also for traffic. I mean, they're coming through LA from all over parts of the country, San Francisco. So driving at night, it makes it much easier for them to deliver cars because there's just less traffic. Car alarms.
You're almost up to three minutes, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'm here just as a good neighbor. I would hate for, you know, folks with, you know, a sensitive disability like Alzheimer's to be within feet of, you know, our dealership. It would just be a rough place, and I just want to be a good neighbor. And it's difficult enough, as it is, to live, you know, across the street from residential area, much less right next door.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss has a question for you.
Oh, you make some good points. Thank you very much for doing that. One thought, though, occurs to me, if you had an Alzheimer's unit, at least as the way it's presented on the site plan, it would sort of be backed up, backed to the car dealership, I think, there, which actually might help on your noise problem, except for that, in that facility.
The issue is the elevated creek behind us with the mall, it's just a soundboard, and it just, I don't care how big of a wall you put up, it is. And then also, I just wanted to make one point really quick that was brought up a few minutes ago. Santa Barbara Volkswagen, which is just located a few blocks away from here, they're on a facility that's very close to the same size as that, so it is viable for a dealership. And they're a new car franchise also. Thank you.
Ms. Murillo also has a question for you.
I have a question. I'm sorry, are you Richard Graham? I didn't hear you say your name.
My name's Matt Graham. Richard's my father.
I'm sorry, Max?
Matt.
Matt.
Yeah.
So you're also a part-owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You said employee, I just wanted to clarify. That's okay.
All of the above.
Yep.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you for bringing up those problems. It sort of begs the question, can you do anything now, whether we prove this or not? Because there's friction between you and neighbors. Is there anything, the mask, the noise, delivery problems, et cetera? I can't think of it offhand, but.
Well, that's why this is zoned for what it is. I mean, it's a commercial zone, and until you can figure out how to disengage car alarms, I'll be the first to buy it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's our primary.
Mr. Francisco also has a question. Oh, and Ms. Murillo, but.
Was it, are you done, Councilmember? Thank you, okay.
Well, okay. And then, Mr. Francisco.
Well, I wanted to thank you for bringing your baby here. We rarely get babies.
Sorry.
No, no, it's a wonderful energy, thank you. But I wanted to ask, how often does a tourist visitor forget their car keys? And, I mean, it's not every night, right, that a tow comes and the car alarm goes off?
No, ma'am, it's primarily in the summer, but you just have, you know, folks who break down all the time. We get accident tow-ins to our facility, and, you know, it is, it's just so random. And that's what I mean by 24 hours a day. We have no control, we have no idea when those vehicles are going to come in. But I would definitely not say every day, but it's pretty consistent.
Okay. I mean, maybe that could be part of the review. And then you have cars delivered at night, you say, well, and how often is that? That's not every day, right?
No, that's not every day either, but it's from all the dealerships in the vicinity there.
Okay. Thank you.
It'd be good if it was every day. That means you're selling them every day, but.
More tax revenue.
Right. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Graham, you may not have an answer for this, but this property, if it's been sitting, you say that it's viable for another car dealership, but it has been vacant for 25 years. Any ideas why that's happening?
I don't. In fact, in Lompoc, they built a Dodge dealership there recently, where they just built the showroom and the lot. But the dealer who built it has a Honda dealership across the street, and so they didn't build a service facility because he said he didn't have the room. So they service all their vehicles across the street at their Honda dealership, and the Chrysler franchise agreed to that. So there's definitely, you know, options for auto, and.
I have something to say on it with, my father-in-law instructed me.
Up to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
My father-in-law instructed me that when he purchased the land, it was, the guy who bought it from, or the guy he bought it from, it was $2 million. And the guy said, the guy could have gotten $10 million, or $6 to $10 million from a Vons, if Vons could go in there. But Vons couldn't go in there. It was strictly for auto dealers. So now, at this point, you know, if they want a higher price, they can't get a higher price for an auto dealer. But an auto dealer could go into that area. There are smaller dealerships that don't need a whole huge lot, like Chevrolet or Lexus, but, you know, need a smaller one, like Volkswagen, or, you know, Subaru, which isn't here at the time. So there are smaller dealerships that could go in that lot. And I don't know, I don't know if Matt can speak on this, but I don't know if they offered it to my father-in-law or Matt.
Yeah, if you, I think you would have to ask the developer if they've requested the franchises.
And maybe it's, you know, too high, they're putting too high of a price on it, because it is resident, it is zoned for dealerships and not residential. And if it was, if it was zoned for more at the time that Mr. Graham purchased it, then the other man who sold it to him could have gotten more. So he's, so Mr. Graham is basically saying, if you're going to rezone it, please rezone his land, too, because he could get a lot better price for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jean Parks?
I live in the condo complex right across.
Put that mic right down to your, there you go.
I live in the condo complex right across from that lot, and we are concerned, I mean, I'm here speaking, just all of a sudden decided to speak up. My neighbors did not come today, but they've been voicing all kinds of concerns about what comes up at that lot. I think the concern is that it's right now zoned for E3 buildings, and we would like to see it still maintain that status, rather than having something like this, or a growth of the dealership in that area. I think the concern about the Alzheimer's facility would be perhaps some more ambulance sounds, and perhaps the tallness of the building. Did I hear something about 45 feet as maximum, something of that sort? Well, that would be far more than the residential area. Everything around there is only two stories tall, and that would stick up, and we would see this, you know, thing sticking up right in front of our eyes. So, anyway, I'm trying to convey what my neighbors have expressed to me, even though they didn't know I was going to come. So it's just, you know, impromptu comment.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Bear in mind, it's E3 right now. This is something they haven't mentioned.
They did mention it, but thank you.
I mean, they, you know, have mentioned either Alzheimer's or car dealership extension, but let's keep that in mind.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, sir?
Yes.
Okay, if you could come up, we need you to fill out a slip, but you can do that afterwards, if you could state your name for the record.
Thanks. I'm Don Hughes, I'm the applicant. And for everybody's information, I've been in the automobile business in Santa Barbara since 1970. I was one of the, I wasn't the developer of the Rancho Royal, but I was involved with it and paid for half the roads and sidewalks in the area. I have an existing dealership in the area and have operated it, spent there since 1972. Spent there since 1972. To try to clarify just a couple of things, I have gone to see Richard Graham and encouraged him to purchase the property. He has not moved forward on that. Steve Leiter has also spoken to Richard at a different point in time and nothing came of that. There's been another dealership owner-operator in town that has looked at it and declined and there is no, this is not something I surreptitiously brought to city council and, you know, to try to do an end run on the dealership concept in the area, but there is, I've owned it, it's obviously vacant, I've owned it for 25 years. It doesn't make any sense in today's world. There is no dealer or manufacturer that's interested in the property. It was up for sale on the open market and there just isn't any interest in it. And that's just a fact of life.
Mr. Rouse has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hughes, so you've owned it for 25 years. How long have you actively marketed this property or attempted to dispose of it in one way or another?
It's about a year. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
You said you marketed it, what price did you ask for it?
I don't know if that's inappropriate thing for me to answer in a public forum.
Well, if it's $29 million, it might be one of them, it's just sitting there. What was the price that you asked? I'm a Realtor, so...
I'm just uncomfortable answering the question in a public forum. I'm sorry. I mean, I'll tell you...
Was it marketed on the public, in the public?
What?
Was it marketed to the public? Was it...
I don't know how relevant that is to the policy question, Mr. Hotchkiss, to tell you the truth.
I'd like to know the answer if you want to tell me later, but was it...
Oh, I'll be happy to tell you later.
All right, fine.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment and move it to the council. Mr. House?
You know, Madam Mayor, for the longest time since the understanding really what the city had in mind for this area and the need at the time to find an appropriate receiving site for the displaced dealerships from down in the Lower State Street area, I always thought that this was really a wise decision on the part of the city council at the time to be able to carve out an area adjacent to the freeway with the kind of visibility that it has and also its separation from uses that could conflict to create the revenue generator opportunity of having a consolidated auto zone, kind of whatever they would call it. But that's, that makes, it made a lot of sense, still makes a lot of sense to me and I'm, I think we should be grateful for it because it's really helped the city financially and also relieved other areas of having to deal with those potential conflicts. The fact is, of course, when you have an area like this, there's going to be an edge to it and along the edge, there's going to be something else. And that's what we were just hearing about with the potential conflicts of the homes that have been built right nearby and how they've had to sort of wrestle with those issues of the noise and the different kind of uses over the years. Now, as I look forward and try to imagine that if this were to be developed as an auto dealership, I mean, I can imagine the kind of public, at least from that neighborhood, concern over an extension of those kinds of noises and issues and things right even closer to them and along that area. I don't think it would be an easy go of it even then, even though that it is already anticipated, you know, over all these years to become an auto dealership. It would be just more, I mean, unless it became a park or something, which I think in a way, along the way, people have sort of adopted this as their neighborhood empty lot and it's been passive like that for a long time. So that's where any development on the site's going to cause some concerns for the neighbors across the street and any development on the site's going to cause some concerns for the auto dealership right there. My interest would be, what is the highest and best use of that that has the least impact on the neighbors on either side? Could that be designed, for instance, in a way to meet a pressing need in our community and actually be designed, understanding the noises and the issues that were just mentioned, so that that backside of the building, as I think was Mr. Hotchkiss suggests, could actually become a sound wall for the rest of the neighborhood and in fact assist in reducing the impacts on the existing neighborhoods? Could it be that it actually fulfills on the requirement that we've had or the wish or dream we've had to continue an extension of a trail along that riparian habitat and do some restoration there? And would it be possible that in that process, no harm would be done to the idea of the auto mall concept, which I think would be a serious harm if we were to begin to consider rezoning like the other empty parcel over there? We really stood up for that the other day and I think I'm very glad that we did. You know, it doesn't have the development potential to build out a great big building there. I think it only has a few thousand square feet of actual buildable square footage, but it has the lot big enough to be able to host another really robust car dealership. So I'm not for doing anything that would encroach on or diminish the validity of, or the viability of the auto mall. But I am very interested in this proposal. It's hard to find a spot like this to cite a much-needed kind of facility like is being proposed. And I believe that if there were entitlements to come out of this, the entitlements would be for a community benefit kind of facility that would have the same kind of footprint and it would have to meet the same kind of requirements for if it were to be sold to someone else. And Mr. Cato, you can actually confirm that for me if that's true. So let's say this went through the whole process and there were entitlements and they were wishing to sell it to another maybe organization that could utilize the same kind of facility or build it to meet what was approved. Wouldn't it have to meet those same basic findings or thresholds?
Mayor Schrader, Councilmember House, again, it sort of depends on the exact situation. If the project went all the way through the entitlement process and these particular developers decided they didn't want to build it, they could sell that entitlement and then somebody else could just build it, right?
Right.
Because the CUP runs with the land.
Right.
But the person that they sold it to could decide that they don't want to do that and then they could go through the entitlement process again to get whatever it is that they do want and that one of those uses would have to be one of the ones that the council allows, right? Car dealership and if the council goes with our recommendation, community benefit housing, this kind of Alzheimer's thing with a care unit with a CUP or landscape open space.
That's right. It would have to meet those criteria or else have convinced the council to change it or something.
Correct. And then go through another entitlement process with the planning commission or whatever body is required at the time in order to get a new entitlement.
Okay. Thank you. So just to finalize, as a, I've always thought of myself on the planning commission as well as on city council as a guardian for the auto mall area that we have defined there. I believe there's merit in this and it should have an opportunity to go forward.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Mr. Graham brings up some viable points, especially to do with consistency in zoning. However, we could try to draw the line in the sand and leave it there and have that be a vacant triangle in perpetuity to the property lost to Mr. Hughes or there may be a viable solution in between. I've visited a number of Alzheimer's facilities in my final journey with my parents and so I've seen them in all residential, next to commercial, next to facilities like this all over the place and I've never really seen a compatibility issue to address this woman's issues over there. I think they can be designed very compatibly and I think in that, I just, I don't know, I'm not an expert, I don't know what it takes to build an automobile dealership, but clearly from the previous cases, we talked to Mr. Horowitz, he had a hard, he's having a hard time finding a viable or a purchaser or a tenant for his property, so I don't know what it's going to take to put somebody over there. I personally kind of doubt that's a possibility. Regarding the sounds that the residents complain about, about the automobile dealership, and I get that, although the automobile dealership was there first and kind of like when you buy a house next to a school. But perhaps there can be a way that a sound barrier may be designed into the new project to help mitigate some of that issue for those neighbors. I think that's a possibility out there. But if you're dealing with creek sensitivity, fault sensitivity and setback sensitivity, I don't know how you're going to get an industrial application like a car dealership to be there. I mean, maybe a showroom with a car like you talked about downtown, but in terms of things like surface space and other ways that car dealerships stay viable, I'm not really sure how that works. Once again, I don't know the business, so I am sensitive to our consistency in what we do with zoning and what we do with zoning changes, our intent and our word, but there is a practical application as well. And whether or not the boots-on-the-ground, big footprint, car dealerships are in our future or they are a thing of the past is something I certainly couldn't speak to. But it really seems that a lot sitting there fallow when that kind of property could be utilized, especially for what I would consider a high-level community benefit, is worth our consideration. So that's kind of where I am right now. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say about that.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the fact that it's been there for 29 years and nothing has been developed is a compelling argument to me that it doesn't fit the dealership mode even though it's in the right area. So, and I'm, you know, a strong proponent of property rights. If we can do something that is of great benefit to the community, which I think more and more this sort of facility would be, so I would support this project.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I attended the League of Cities Conference, there was a workshop about the changing nature of how people buy things related to sales tax revenue and people are buying things online and I'm connecting with what Mr. Cato was saying about a different way of buying cars, a different way of that maybe there doesn't need to be this huge lot of beautiful, shiny cars. And especially because the Mel Clayton lot has laid there without any bites and people wanting to come in and sell some cars tells me that there might be something changing in that industry. I also respect the property rights of Mr. Hughes and am moved by the need for that kind of care for our Alzheimer's population and our elders and our population is aging. I think it's an area that has an interface of a lot of different kind of land uses, but I would be defensive of the Graham business because you were there first. And so if something moves in next to you and they have complaints, it's like Casa de la Rosa has been there forever, having their quinceañeras and their parties and then somebody built some housing next door and you knew you were moving in next to a community center where people celebrate life and, you know, maybe celebrate along with them. But it's a small town and we're all on top of each other. So I, Mr. Graham, I would, you know, if people are complaining, I was going, I would say you were there, you were there first. That said, the design of the new facility, the proposed facility, should take into account that you don't want the lights of the car lot shining into the patients' beds and certainly I nod to this lady here who came from the residential area that whatever, the design should also not affect the neighbors across the street. So, and it sounds like people are getting their act together and that you would design something that would fit in with the neighborhood. That's what we would ask. I'm also concerned about creek protection. I think the city review process is always sensitive to that. And then I'll close by saying that it's too bad a miniature golf course could not go back in. A lot of work that I do with at-risk youth and youth that are bored, not necessarily in trouble yet, is that they miss the golf course, the miniature golf course. I'm a great miniature golf course person, I'm a great putter. I guess that's what it is. So I would like it too, but anyway, just sorry that that went bye-bye, but I know that that's not on the table. I'm just throwing it out there that a lot of us miss the miniature golf course. Thank you.
You said earlier, part of the concerns you had with following up on Mr. Rouse's initial line of questioning had to do with the car dealership and a fault line. Why is that not an issue with an Alzheimer's facility?
Mayor Schrader, it's a concern for, I mean, it's a concern for any development that goes on there, right? You have to have a certain setback. It just reduces the amount of space that you have to be able to do anything on it.
Right.
Right, so...
But you made it sound like it was an issue for the car dealership and really an issue for something else.
It's just reduced...
It's an issue.
It's a constraint.
Okay.
And it seems like the car dealerships, all, when we've been talking to the applicants, you know, they, what I got from them is they need more space and, you know, that's just a constraint that makes it even harder to try to develop a dealership on this lot.
But the same constraints would happen on any building there too, right?
Correct. Yes, the applicants seem to be able to work something out that works for them.
And then the community benefit housing designation or senior residential care facility could be a for-profit company, correct? I mean, that wouldn't prohibit, it's not necessarily a non-for-profit organization that would take it over. It could be.
Mayor Schrader, yeah, that's correct.
Could be one of them.
Community benefit housing could be rental housing.
Right.
Right. You know, it's all that category development that was approved in the general plan. So rental housing, it could be something like the Alzheimer's care facility, but it wouldn't be...
Even though the current, go ahead.
But it wouldn't be market-rate condos.
Okay. So it could be market-rate rentals?
Correct.
If the Alzheimer's facility process, they got their entitlements, let's say, like you said, they decided not to do it, someone else bought the property, they have the entitlements of the, what use could be and let's say they go through the permitting, planning process for rental housing, they could do that if this zone change occurred as recommended, correct? I mean, they have to go through a whole lot of work to make it happen, but...
Mayor Schrader, maybe I misspoke. I probably did. Because what we're recommending is that the council initiate a specific plan amendment for community benefit housing, but to allow the planning commission to maybe, maybe not allow all those types and maybe just keep it limited. So it sort of depends on what happens through this process.
So that could happen now?
Yeah.
If this moves forward from here, the planning commission could restrict even further the use of what you mean by community benefit housing?
Correct. It would, we were running through the process, the planning commission would come back to the, we would come back to the council with a recommendation at the very end about what the actual language of the specific plan amendment would be and the exact type of uses that would be allowed and it might be smaller than the broad range of community benefit housing that we think about right now.
Okay. Thank you. First off, if Elon Musk is listening out there, we love Tesla and would love you to come to Santa Barbara, so that's a separate and apart, but you mentioned it, so that would be very exciting. This, you know, this is very reminiscent to me about Los Portales. Is it Los Portales? And the, which is, I forget what it's called now. It's the, where we had M1, we had an M1 zone, the only place in town where you could have M1 zoning, no residential allowed and for good reasons, very good reasons. I was on the City Housing Authority when the thing first started and we were very excited about it to have workforce housing in an area because the land was cheaper, because it was M1 to, you know, and went through the Housing Authority and the Santa Barbara Foundation and there's a beautiful project there, but the pain and suffering that happened between, you know, the initial idea and what we have was, wasn't easy. And I think, you know, so I'm not saying no to this today, but I'm very skeptical about it. I want to see what could happen. So I'm happy to start the conversation, but I'm not sure what's going to come back later. And just having gone through that experience of what was originally a, I think it was 96-unit workforce housing, 100% workforce housing project with no government subsidy to deal with people who were not in the nonprofit executive world or the firefighters or your teachers, I mean, you know, that workforce housing piece, that's not what's there today. And it's not to diminish what's there today, but I don't think if that project is what's on the ground today came to us, to the council, when we were asked to rezone the M1, I don't think we would have said yes to that project. It ended up being that way, but that's not what I think we were thinking of when we were first saying it. So it's sort of, this feels very familiar and I don't mean to say that there's any bad intentions or anything like that. There's certainly a need for... bad intentions or anything like that, there's certainly a need for Alzheimer's-type facilities, certainly a type of need for senior housing, certainly a need for rental housing, but I'm going to be looking at this very carefully, should this come back, and so I'll be okay voting forward today, but that in no means means that I'm going to be a yes vote when it comes back, so I'll just tell you now. Mr. House?
I'm really grateful for those remarks, because we want to do it right, no matter what, here, and it's, I'm noticing that we have a director, and assistant director of our housing authority here, members of the board, one of our, also one of our top developers of affordable housing is here, from the private sector, and I think it's something none of us would want to make a great error here, we want to be really, really careful, and when this comes back, I'm sure we'll be looking at what it means to be state-licensed senior residential care facility with a conditional use permit, and all those restrictions, community benefit housing, and then recreation open space, which goes to what Ms. Mario's talking about, along the creek. I mean, these are, this is really one where all these things crunch together, and really with that in mind, and maybe there's a little bit, as Mr. Rouse, having lost my mom to Alzheimer's, maybe there's a little bit of a piece in there of it, I move that we initiate an amendment to the Rancho Arroyo specific plan, and I'm going to just say it out loud, to allow the following additional uses on Area A2: state-licensed senior residential care facility with a conditional use permit, community benefit housing, and recreation open space, and then initiate a zone change to Rancho Arroyo specific plan area, as is written here in our staff report.
There a second?
Second.
Any other comments to the motion? Okay, all of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you. Move on to item 13.
Resolution and appropriation of $1,050,000 for purchase of property at 3780 Foothill Road, and initial planning costs for a creek restoration and water quality improvement project, including recommendation A that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting real property located at 3780 Foothill Road, and authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to execute an agreement for acquisition of real property with escrow instructions and all related documents that may be required, all subject to review and approval as to form by the city attorney, relating to a future creek restoration and water quality improvement project, and consenting to the recordation of the related deed in the official records County of Santa Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, I'm Cameron Benson, I'm the Creeks Division Manager, and I'm here today to talk about potential acquisition of property at 3780 Foothill Road. As you know, the Creeks Division mission is to improve creek and ocean water quality, and to restore natural creek systems. Sometimes, in order to effect that mission, we consider property acquisitions, we look at some specific criteria as we're, as we're looking at the possibility of a property acquisition, first thing is a strategic location, another consideration is a willing seller. We always are looking to, to get a good value for the city and for the Creeks Division program. We look at whether the property is necessary for us to complete a restoration project, and then we also go to our Creeks Advisory Committee to get their feedback. In this case, we went to, we had a ad hoc subcommittee of the Creeks Advisory Committee, and we also took it to the Budget Subcommittee of the Creeks Advisory Committee, and a noticed public hearing, both the ad hoc Subcommittee and the Budget Subcommittee unanimously supported going forward with the acquisition. The purpose of the, of the project we're looking at the acquisition for today is a creek restoration project on Barger Creek, which is in the upper Arroyo Borough watershed. Our project goals are to improve water quality, wildlife habitat, erosion control, or bank stabilization on the banks of the creek, and also aesthetics. This is a watershed map showing the location of the, of the property in relation to the Arroyo Borough watershed. It's a little hard to see on this map, but you can see this blue area is all the Arroyo Borough watershed going around here, this is the subject property up here, and this is Arroyo Borough Beach down here, and Douglas Family Preserve. So, the property is in the upper portion of the Arroyo Borough watershed, it's almost 14 and 1/4 acres. That size, just to give you some context, is similar to Rocky Nook, the size of Rocky Nook Park, it's a little larger than that, that's this park over here, Stevens Park, which is right here, and Oak Park, which is right here, and that gives you a little context of what the size is like around the creek. Whoops, excuse me, this is Oak Park, I'm sorry, this is, was it Willow Glen over here? So, that's Oak Park over there. It's also adjacent, it's also directly adjacent to a creek tree planting project that we did on private properties. We had seven private property owners on Arroyo Borough that are adjacent to each other, participate in our creek tree program, and do a restoration on their contiguous properties, just on the other side of Foothill Road from the subject property. And then lastly, this property is part of the view corridor up into the foothills and up into the mountains and National Forest. Here's, this is an aerial photo of the, of the property, again, you see Stevens Park over here, this is the 14 and 1/4 acre property, you see, Barger Creek comes down here, and the confluence with the Arroyo Borough is right, is right downstream of that. And here's a little closer aerial photo. The purchase of this property would include 1,800 acres of, or, excuse me, 1,800 linear feet of Barger Creek. The acquisition price also includes a conservation easement over the neighboring property, which is a 10-acre property here. Conservation easement covers another 300 linear feet of creek, it's approximately one acre. That would allow Creeks Division to come in and restore that section of creek, and also prevent future development, or agricultural, or industrial, or manufacturing-type uses in that area of the, of that property. The acquisition price also includes access easement, so where you see the yellow section here, we have, we have an access easement across this 10-acre property, right here, to a road, to the northern, or northerly portion of the 14 acres. There's also another access easement down here, to get to the southerly portion of the property. And then we, we did go out and hire an independent appraiser, appraiser, to do an appraisal for the 14 acres, and the purchase price that we're proposing today is within the appraised value that we got from the appraiser. So, we're looking at a $900,000 purchase price, and again, that includes the, the fee title to the 14.19 acres, as well as the conservation easement and the access easement. We are also proposing $150,000 to cover our escrow costs, our surveys, our testing and inspection, and then beginning our feasibility study and preliminary design for the restoration project. This would be, this funding would go into the Creeks Capital Fund for a restoration project in the upper Arroyo Borough watershed, and the construction will be funded through Measure B and future grant funds. And then lastly, I just wanted to...
If I might interrupt, could we go back to that last line? Does close of escrow depend upon what we find in your surveys, testing, inspection, et cetera?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes, we have, you know, that's part of our due diligence, we'll be starting out with a Phase 1 environmental study, this is an agricultural property, it has been used for agriculture in the past, so we'll be looking for various things you might find on a former agricultural property, from pesticides, or fertilizers, or diesel fuel, or other chemicals, and yes, we don't need to go forward, we don't want to buy a contaminated property or something like that.
Okay, so, we're sort of, sort of a yellow light instead of a green light, if I could put it that way, you've got to find out first if it's the real deal.
Correct, but short of, short of some sort of problem there...
Catastrophic.
We would plan to go forward, yes.
Well, and just to, you put construction to be paid for by Measure B, but the entire, the $1,050,000 is also Measure B money, correct?
Correct, yes, yes. The construction money would just be additional money in the future, so I just want to make that, that clear, that that's what we're looking for. So, our timeline, we're here today, October 8th, our escrow period is approximately 60 days, we would be looking to close escrow, subject to the environmental review, surveys, and agreements that we just discussed, close escrow before the end of the year, and then we would begin our, our technical studies, hydraulic, hydrologic studies, and move forward with our design permitting, et cetera, and then go to construction in May of 2015, so over that summer. And then the one thing I would add to this is that, once we close escrow, we're in a position to start looking for and applying for grants to, to assist with the design and construction costs of the eventual project there. And with that, I'll conclude, and happy to answer, any questions?
Thank you, I don't see any speaker slips for this. Any questions or comments, except to say, cool? I think it's a very exciting acquisition here. Any comments, questions, motion? Mr. White?
Well, I would move approval of the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. There's so much going on, you're speechless. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Thursday, I attended the 90th anniversary of planning, of the Planning Commission, Santa Barbara City Planning Commission, and there was a neat little gathering here of planning commissioners from many eras, and definitely, you were handed out some wonderful certificates, and it was, it was just a great day to contemplate the voyage that this city has taken to excellent planning. It's a long time coming, it's been a lot of, just all those years of attentive work that has created the beautiful city we had, so it was a wonderful day to celebrate.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we, I represented the city for the ribbon-cutting of the new Pathpoint Building, which is something they own, and now is their permanent facility in the old Dry County's Blood Bank Building, so that'll be a, it's very nice to have them back downtown and part of our community.
Mr. House?
As the board member, as a board member on the Community Action Commission Board, we had our annual fiscal audit the other day, and just the reason I clicked on was, it just became so clear to those of us on the board, the, the direct impact of the sequester of funds in Washington DC, and, and all these issues that seem so national and so far away, come all the way down to senior nutrition programs, and people not having food available to them, and, and children being cut from Head Start programs and things like that. And just I take a moment to say that, as we sit around the table, and we really look at the actual impact it has on an organization with a $25 million budget, who's the number one provider of social services and nutrition program, and energy efficiency programs, and Head Start, it breaks your heart, so I just kind of need to put that out there, and make sure that we all remember that when we hear these big, big news from Washington DC, it has an impact locally.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended a swearing-in of five new police officers last week, and two of them were women, right on. I'd love that we have more female officers. I attended a meeting of the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, and they reviewed some of the cases that they had resolved, and it's a fascinating process, and then also fascinating how, how a tenant and a landlord get into problems with each other, and sometimes it's because the city has found not just an illegal unit, but kind of a really unsafe illegal unit. Some of us have lived in safe illegal units, but they're, you know, so it was really great to see the good work of those people. And then, for fun, I went to a dinner celebrating 50 years of the Santa Barbara Alano Club, which is a place where 12-step meetings happen, and it's a place of recovery programming, so that was a lot of fun, and Michael McDonnell was there, and Peter Noon, who's a real crackup, if anybody has never seen him perform, really worthwhile, so congratulations to the Alano Club.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with you, I was at the annual grant reception for, I guess we were remarking the California Arts Month, or something, I can't remember exactly.
California Arts Day.
Thank you. And it was nice, because there were so many happy faces there, that we had been able to support, you know, we don't give them a ton of money, but everything we can do is helpful to our art effort, public and private, here in town. And then secondly, also along with you, and Mr. White, I was at the AIDS Walk on Cabrillo Boulevard that had, I don't know, my guess is 1,000 people, maybe more. It was kind of interesting, it was poignant for me, and I'd have to say selfish, because as I was going down, I suddenly remembered people that I should have remembered long before and hadn't, so it was a good reminder to, and David Selber had a moment of silence, so that was kind of nice. But anyway, people were excited, and glad to be there, and to pay some money to support AIDS cures and services, and I was glad I was there.
Thank you. Also on, there was a lot going on, also on Saturday morning was the Alzheimer's Walk, and I think there were close to 1,500 participants, is one of the larger ones there, in a new venue at, they started at Earl Warren Showgrounds, and actually walked up the sidewalk area of Las Bacitas to State Street through Loretto Plaza, so that was, that was interesting to, they usually were at the zoo, they outgrew the zoo, so they moved their venue first time. And on a lighter note and a fun note, I did a ribbon-cutting Saturday afternoon at the Pickle Room, which is formerly known, and lovingly known as Jimmy's, and the original Jimmy's Oriental Garden sign is inside at the bar. Wally was there, serving drinks, and it looks fabulous in there, they're going to put up some more historical photos inside, but the red booths never looked so clean before, it looks really great, but it's, and then the owners of Three Pickles next door, they're running, they're running the Pickle Room now, so that was a lot of fun. Okay, we have an item 14.
Conference with legal counsel pending litigation.
Thank you, and we will adjourn from there, thanks.